Minutes from July. Has everyone had a chance to review minutes? Any comments, corrections? Do we have a motion to accept the minutes as printed?
Motion to.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Ah.
Motion carried. Thank you. And that brings us to you, Helen, librarian's report.
Okay. I'm sorry for the lateness of my report today. Between vacations and. Everybody had a late start getting their. Little reports to me to put together. Things are going very, very well with our curbside delivery and curbside pickup. It's still going strong. Our homebound visits, we started those up again. And that's going very well. We're at pre-COVID level for that. And we started taking appointments. We had started with the computers and study rooms, but we. Expanded that to take appointments for browsing. And there were some people that were really anxious for that because they like picking out their own books and. And seeing what's new instead of giving us an exact title or author to look up. So that's been going very well. The children's department is being a little bit more cautious than. The adult department. Because we know when the kids come in, they're touching everything, pulling everything off the shelves. And even though we've made it very. I don't want to say unfriendly, but there's, there's really nothing to do except to look for books. So it's a little bit different. Oh, wait a minute. Elaine just texted me. Sorry, can't get in. If anybody wants to text her and try to walk her through it, feel free. I'll just keep talking. Where was I? Oh, browsing. So that's, that's going very well, too. We've decided to hold off on opening Saturdays until. At least October. Our meeting room is being used as a. Study space. And we are not. Going to have any in-person programs or speakers anytime soon either, probably not until after the first of the year. We've had some people ask us for a space bigger than the study room. If a couple of people wanted to group study together. That's what we're using the meeting room for now. We have like five stations set up where they can be socially distant and. But still be together. We also put more seating outside. I don't know if you've been to the. But Parks and Grounds found us some benches. And we put them on. Extra right around the patio area in the front because our Wi-Fi does reach out to there. We are going to purchase some more. Another, gosh, Wi-Fi access point. And hopefully we can reach our Wi-Fi. Much further into the parking lot. These people have been sitting in their cars to use our Wi-Fi. So that's, those are all the improvements or changes that we've made anyway. Up to now. We want to see how things go with the schools before we make any further plans that in Saturdays. But if they're all, if everybody's sent home again, then we're, we're just going to have to pull back. So we're, we're kind of loathe to make plans much beyond the beginning of October. Any questions? I do have the blessing of the town manager for all of this. I had a meeting with him yesterday. And he's been pleased with our progress and is okay with us. Holding off on Saturdays for now.
Helen?
Yeah.
This is Carol.
Hello?
Are the books still being held when they come in?
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Seventy-two hours.
How long do you think you'll have to do that for?
A while. Yeah. And that's, that's where your boardroom is being used. That's our quarantine room right now. Carol, I'm sorry we lost you. Let me see if I can unmute you. Carol? Carol?
Yeah, back.
Now you, now we can hear you. We couldn't hear you.
Okay, sorry. Inter, interlibrary loans. Are people able to do that now if they, if you don't have the book and?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. Thanks.
Sure.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Let me just take a quick look. At my report to make sure. Oh, I, I put all the totals for our summer reading programs, which obviously the numbers were down. But it's. Be expected. We were pleased with the attendance considering the circumstances. The. Let's see, what else did we do? Our. Book bundles from the children's and teen department going well. This is when parents call up and say. Oh, I see Elaine's name.
Is joined.
Yay. Let me see if I can unmute her. Elaine, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Yay. What happened? Oh, dear. Okay, you'll have to read. For the beginning of the meeting, but I'm just giving an overview of what we're doing. How we're progressing during COVID. We've also been giving out craft kits to the adults and a lot of people are picking those up with their curbside pickup. A lot of libraries that were passport facilities. I would say all of them have not started that service up again. We're thinking about maybe starting up notary service again, but I don't know about that. Right now, we haven't, we've had one request to do it, but they were just asking at that time. They didn't really need it at that point. We're not going to push that. We are collaborating with the Kensington Garden Club to do some programs, right, Carol? The, we're having a joint program with them. I think, I believe it's next week on hydrangeas. And we have over eighty people signed up for this virtual program. So we're very pleased. What else are we doing? I just wrote down a lot of the. Still getting are still some of them off the wall. Very nice to hear. All the people that have been thankful for what we've been able to provide them. So the, the list of gratitudes has really increased this month. So that's been nice. We are. Just doing some extra projects now that things are slow. We're, we're shifting the books to make more room in the, in the, in the shelves for new purchases. Although something that we need to discuss is. Since people aren't really banging down our doors to come in. Are they happy with the situation? Maybe we shouldn't spend so much on hardcover books anymore. And we should put our money toward digital offerings. This is something that we'll be discussing as we move forward. But a lot of libraries are in the, the same boat. I met with the library directors in Rocky Hill, Cromwell, and Weathersfield last week. And they're actually behind us in the offerings that they're giving their patrons now. They're not taking browsing appointments. Although some of them next month will be opening their doors to browse without appointments. So I don't. Nobody's sure how that's going to work, but I think they're going to give it a try. I think it's Rocky Hill who's going to be doing that. But everybody is in the same boat. We're all kind of licking our wounds because we all worked so. To make the library welcoming and a community center and now. All the things that, all the new services that we offered, we can't right now. So it's a little bit frustrating, but we'll work through it too. And, and hopefully our. Here's my segue. Our budget will be in place so that we can continue to do what we've been doing and maybe add some more. Digital services because that's, that's where the money goes. Any questions?
Oh, I do have a question on. Just. Information that goes out to the town. Because I know I, I look at the Facebook page. To get a preview of what's going on, but are we thinking of now that school's back? Going to the schools and telling them about, you know, what they can do, like if there's Wi-Fi and stuff like that or?
Nobody wants to set foot in the school.
Or send an email to the principals to say, here's what we have.
Yep. Yes, actually, the schools contacted us and asked us for a list of resources. For different levels. So we're going to be providing that. We've put in the newspaper, on our Facebook page, in our e-newsletter that we send out. We've done. Senior Center does a robo-call every week and we've put a, a couple of blurbs on that. So we're just looking for different ways to get people to come in the building again.
I did see that article. About the, the cranes. So I thought that was nice.
Yes, that was nice. One woman made a thousand herself.
We could probably reuse that and put it as decorations for Christmas tree.
Yeah, yep. Hopefully we'll still have people coming in the doors then. If any, any suggestions of how to get the word out, I'm willing to. Take you up on it.
Do, do you have Instagram? I'm not a big user of it, but some people use it. Or you could make a TikTok.
Yes, we could. We have an Instagram, we have Twitter, we have Facebook. I, I will definitely at the staff meeting tomorrow morning, ask for volunteers to do a TikTok.
Do the kids, because the kids in the schools have TikTok. I mean, like.
Yes. Yeah. Exactly. Unfortunately, they need their parents to drive them there, but. We would like to reach them as well.
Well, with the online learning, we, you, we can say. You know, the, the school ha, I mean, the library has some online capabilities. Like, you know, you can download books if you have a library card, you can download it if you need to read something. Because I don't know if they're still lending books out to students for reading.
In school, you mean?
School, yeah.
I don't know. But we've been doing a lot of those bundles and that's been, that's been pretty popular.
I took one for my son.
Oh, good.
Yeah. Good.
Are they, are you doing totally online learning?
No.
You're doing hybrid thing?
Yeah.
Yeah. We're happy to give them whatever they want. We're working on a lot of book lists and brochures of our digital resources. So.
Right.
We'll be getting the word out. I think we're kind of afraid to do too much right now until we see what happens in a few weeks. They all get sent home or whatever is going to happen. Kind of. We, we have two paths. We're, we're prepared for either one, but it would be nice to know. Thanks.
So far, so good.
Yeah. Yeah. That's all I've got, Ms. Donna.
Um, just one quick question. Are you still seeing a lot of pickups for the curbside?
Oh, yeah. I think we're up, we were up to four thousand. End of August.
It is great. It is very convenient for sure.
Yep.
Some calls to go in and browse? Yeah, I'd like to come today at two. Is it available?
Um, we, we take enough appointments on the adult side that we can usually accommodate, yeah, even walk-ins. So, yes. Yeah, if you call ahead of time, then, then we can even give you more leeway.
Wonderful.
Yep.
Helen, are you drinking out of a water pitcher?
Looks like it. You see it?
Yeah, I do. It's very large. I don't know if it was an optical illusion by the way you were holding it.
It is an optical. Be nice if it was really wine in there.
Yes, well, we won't know.
That's true. I could be like Stephen Colbert.
Um, one question about the program you're putting on with the, um, the garden club. What are you using for a media to present?
Unfortunately, this.
Okay, so are you able to make it the presenter is the only one seen or do you have eighty little pictures of people?
You can, as the host, I can turn everybody on and off.
Oh, okay.
I just want to see you all.
Ah, that's nice.
Yeah.
I think I am scheduled still to do my presentation. Would be something along these lines for the tomato growing thing that got canceled last year. Earlier this year.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure how well it'll translate through audio like this, so I'm just kind of curious what the. It's, um, I can't remember if it was February, I think it was February we had. I had gotten moved to.
Yeah, I thi, I think it was March.
Mar, oh, is it March?
Chris, I, I think it's March, but I'm not sure. I mean, it's, everything's in flux, as you know.
Yeah, yeah. Well, when you know officially again, maybe I'll check through my emails, but if you see something, just shoot me a quick email, please.
I will do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
What about all the plastic bags we're using? We're not paying a fee for those, are we?
Yeah. Buying them from Sam's Club, so it's fifteen dollars for a thousand bags.
But we're not, we're not paying anything to the state because we're using a bag, right?
Right. What they don't know won't hurt them.
Now they know.
I don't see the initials N L here. I'm not worried.
Yeah, you're recording this, so if anybody listens to it.
Oh, Lilian. I am going to put wine in that glass. Now, we, um, we do accept bag donations. As a matter of fact, somebody brought in some today. And, you know, I hope that once the people get them home, they, they reuse them for other things. But I don't know. We had bought bags that were a little bit sturdier in the beginning. But can't afford that anymore, so we're down to the. I guess we could say something BYOB, but. Bag.
And you said fifteen dollars a thousand, right?
What was it?
Fifteen dollars for a thousand? That's, do you have to special order those or they're in the store?
They're in the store.
Wow.
Yeah, because a lot of retail businesses shop there. Kind of supplies, so. Yeah. Any other questions? All right.
Um, yes. Sharon asked me, and I also ran into this situation. I was on my phone. Pulling up account and it said. Security certificate. Do you know this website? You should not enter it. And that's happened to me a couple of times. Sharon said someone she knows mentioned it to her and she's had the problem on her computer. So I wondered if I could mention that to you. And I actually backed off because it was official looking and I did back off because I could come home and go on the computer. But I thought I'd mention it to you if your IT people have run into that or heard about that or.
Oh, I'll definitely bring it up.
Okay, I told her I would. She asked me to ask the question.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I guess that brings us to subcommittees. Governance?
Nothing new for governance.
Okay, finance and foundation?
Nothing.
Okay, and outreach?
Nothing.
Okay. Communications, I don't have any. Do you, Helen?
No. I put them all on my report.
Old business? Anyone have any old business? Uh, new business then. Discussion of the fiscal year budget directives.
Yeah. Uh, I hope you had a chance to read through it. Because now you know what I'm up against every year, but this year it's probably be, going to be a little bit more stringent. Uh, the town manager. Got an email saying. He should expect, not for sure, but he should expect. Cut in aid to the town. So if that happens, then I'm sure it'll trickle down to all of our departments. I'm going to forge ahead with a reasonable budget. I don't know if he's going to ask me to make cuts. The one. Thing I tried to do last year besides open on Sundays, which I'm not even going to approach this year. But I do have two librarians that have their master's degrees and. Make less money than some of my circulation people. So I would like to get them. Throughout most of Hartford County, they're the second lowest paying library for positions like that. Most reference librarians, if they're part-time, make between twenty-seven and thirty dollars an hour. And these women are, are right around the twenty dollar an hour mark. I've been trying to get them up to even the Connecticut Library Association level. I think that's the lower end at twenty-seven dollars, but. Every year I try and, and I don't succeed. And I think I would have gotten it last year, except at the last minute, the Board of Finance took away everybody's. Increases. And that, even though it was small, it was an increase in the personnel budget and they just wiped it out. But I was very close. Several town council members were on board. The town manager was on board. Head of Human Resources was on board. But they wanted to have a zero percent increase and they took away all of our asks. So I would like to get that done in this budget year. The town manager encouraged me to try again, so I will. But again, not promising anything. And I'll. Eddie budget, we might move some monies around to. Increase database budget and decrease our book budget. You know, instead of getting five copies of Ellen Hildebrand's Twenty Eight Summers, we'll get three. And people will just have to understand and wait. But. I, I'm running out of ideas. I, cutting people is my absolute last resort. I will cut out hours before I do that. But. It hasn't happened yet, but I just wanted you to be aware of the tough time that we're going to have going forward. And you can see all the deadlines in that timeline in the budget directive, so. We're starting early. We're one of the earliest libraries to submit their budgets to the town in our consortium of thirty-one libraries. Rocky Hill doesn't have to have her budget ready till February, so. I'm a jealous. So if you have any suggestions, if, um, when you read it, you would like to discuss it, especially my finance and foundations committee. I'm happy to chat. If you want to give input, I'm always willing to.
Just curious, have you, um, we'll say since the quarantine. Has the library spent more money because of all the digital things or less or the same or?
Yeah, we, um. One example I can give you is Hoopla. We increased our. What should I call them? Borrowes, like. You could use four. Checkouts a month, and I think we raised that to five. Our, our budget is going crazy with Hoopla. People are loving it. It has a great audiobook download section. Where we see most of our use in that. We're switching. Some of our magazines to online because people don't want to actually hold a magazine that a lot of people have been thumbing through. Other thing we've been thinking of and just to increase, to get one more access point in the library for Wi-Fi. Is going to cost us about eight hundred dollars. So. To try to weigh all the different options and put the money where it'll help the most people.
Why is it so expensive for the access points?
We get, we need a, a heavy duty and I guess a broader band than a home. We get it through a, a technology company that gives us a pretty good deal most of the time.
Is that eight hundred a one-time deal or is that a reoccurring?
Yeah, then there's like a maintenance every, we have to pay a maintenance fee for all of our access points.
Okay.
Our whole system now, because I changed that over. Oh, boy. I'm almost here ten years, by the way. When I first got here, ten years ago, I think like two years after that, I updated the Wi-Fi system. So now it's eight years old and that's old in technology years, right, Lilian? So, um. We also got a quote for a whole new Wi-Fi system that was almost three thousand dollars. That wasn't anything I could do at the time.
Yeah.
That was at the end of last year's budget and of course, with my budget being due so early. I couldn't plan for that in this year's budget. Because everything was pre-COVID. Nobody knew what it was going to be. And if I had put it in, the Board of Finance probably would have cut it out.
If people aren't using Wi-Fi in the library, do you charge for it?
No. As I've been told a couple of times during this pandemic. We pay taxes here for this facility and you shouldn't be closed and. Yeah, we hear it all. If we charge for Wi-Fi, oh, boy. If we charge for Wi-Fi, oh, boy. Any other budget questions I can answer for you? The first deadline that's coming up is to start to develop a capital, uh, a capital budget. That's ticket items. I don't know if the Wi-Fi system would qualify as a capital expense. It has to be a certain amount and I don't know if it's something that's more physical. It has to be a physical, um, expenditure. Know if they would do it for technology, but that's something that's, as a, as a capital expense. If we can keep improving our technology. Because if that's the way the world is going, we have to keep up and we have to strengthen what we've got.
Now, is that something that would be worth, um, pulling out of our, let's see, donations? I know one of our donations was more like technology-based.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna pay, pay. I'm gonna pay the, um, $800 out of that fund.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and the other thing too, now we have to buy our own PPE. So I count for stuff like that in my budget last year, you know? So all of a sudden, we're having to buy masks and gloves because I don't want my people handling unquarantined books without wearing gloves. And even though we have Plexiglas everywhere and they have gloves on, and a lot of them, a lot of people like me, I, I prefer wearing a cloth mask. So I've been buying my own and washing them and wearing those. But people that can't do that, prefer to wear their disposable ones. And under the governor's, employers are supposed to, uh, purchase those for their employees. But that's not in my budget either, so I'm not quite sure where that's going to come from. But it'll go in next year's budget.
Um, Helen, I have a question about passports.
Yeah.
Um, is there any, um, thought? Um, you may have covered this already and I apologize if you already did, but.
Yeah, we did, we, we did. Um, nobody's doing them right now, Elaine.
Okay.
There's too much closeness involved, especially when you have to take the picture. There's no social distance there. And filling out the forms, you know? Do it and go across the table at each other, but.
I was thinking there was like, you know, when you go to motor vehicles, I mean, the camera is, is substantially away from you, you know? So in my mind, I was thinking that's how it was done and it might be, um, might be feasible or doable, but no.
They have a, they have a really good camera setup and justify paying that kind of money for the. Yeah, service.
Can't do it through Plexiglas? Drill a hole in the Plexiglas for the lens?
For the eyes.
Chris, I wish you could read the instructions that the passport agency sends us and all the things we have to be careful of with, with glasses and, and the eye color. And, uh, it's just unbelievable. No. That's the short answer.
And that money does not stay at the library, correct?
That's correct.
It goes to general fund?
Mm-hmm.
I think that's not right.
I agree.
I agree too.
It could be used to fund your, your two librarian positions. With the amount of money that you've already gotten.
Exactly.
And then, you know, where does it go once it goes to the general funds?
Well, it doesn't go to me.
Exactly. Is there some way we can influence that? Maybe like talk to the town manager or petition them to.
You can try. Uh, past, pre, past town managers have not been on board with that and, um, the current district director is not on board with that.
What was the reason they give you?
Because I buy all the equipment and the training with town money. So that's why the money has to go back to the town.
Well, it kind of goes back to the town by paying the town employees, so.
I know. I, I, I have tried and, but. Tried with new town manager.
Maybe we should do L L M, Library Lives Matter.
I like that. We'll get T-shirts made for the. All right, let, let me take a drink over here where we'll.
From Friends, right? They're closed still and not doing anything.
Okay. You, you really want to hear it? Okay. Friends are doing curbside pickup. They made $12 last month and they were thrilled. They, um, they are having some tax problems right now. I guess some, like, somebody applied, yes, somebody applied for a, a sales use tax number and never submitted any paperwork for it. So the state contacted Debbie and said, I need all the, um, money, the amounts of money that you had in 2012 and you owe taxes on it. So I don't know what's going to happen. I, actually Cindy, my admin assistant, she went through the tax code and found a, a section that said, library book sales don't have to pay tax. So I said, you know, it's not really our problem. I mean, it's our problem a little bit, you know? They're the ones that do all the paperwork and keep control of their own money. So I said, just send that statute to them and maybe they can figure out what's, what's going on. But that's all I've heard from the Friends besides not being open.
Where do they have their curbside?
Helen, didn't they go through that a couple of years ago? A couple of years ago that happened.
They, the last thing that they went through was not filing, um, uh, their nonprofit status.
Oh, okay.
To pay to be a 501(c)(3) and they didn't. Yeah.
Okay.
They lost that status. That's what they had to pay.
Okay, yeah.
And where do they do their curbside pickup? Does anyone know about it?
No. I put it on Facebook. Nobody told me. So, yeah, I don't know. I don't know. They met last week for the first time virtually and, um, that was the first time they've met since March.
I can understand. How do they do curbside pickup if people don't know what titles they have to sell? It's like you just.
Yeah, but they just take a shot.
That's crazy. So I, if I want to buy something, I would just give it a shot and say, oh, do you happen to have Lord of the Rings?
Yep.
If they say yes, fine. If they say no, then I'm out of luck. I mean.
Yep. As far as I understand, I, I haven't gotten the exact, um, rules for how they're doing it. I think the person that spent $12, um, was a, someone that went to the book sale a lot and kind of knew their inventory. So they know that they have a lot of James Pattersons and stuff like that. So they just called Debbie and I think Debbie put her phone number on the, the Facebook page, the Friends Facebook page. But they only have like 40 followers, so I'm sure they're not.
They're inundated. Oh, boy.
And I'm afraid to publicize it because I don't know how they're going to manage it. And especially now with the tax difficulties. I, I'm gonna just stand back for a little bit, see how it checks out.
Probably makes sense.
They should just do a grab bag, mystery bag of books for X amount of money. And then you get what you get.
Yep.
Right? So it's like you're taking a chance. Like, like for $5, you get like five books and it's whatever books.
Yeah.
You know, they curate the books that they put in there.
Mm-hmm.
That way I would, you know, if, if they were, if they were, um, just gonna advertise that, people might buy that more than just, you know, do you have this book or do you have that book?
Are they taking in donations right now? No. No. So, so their inventory is, is stagnant.
Yep.
And they're not increasing their, their, um, choices.
Right.
And people just take a, take a wild guess at what they have. Oh, my God.
What are other?
Well, this is off the record, okay? They're nuts, really. They don't know what they're doing.
Yeah, if they don't know what they're doing, they just, just put a mystery bag together and then advertise a mystery bag.
Exactly.
You know?
That's a, that's a good idea.
You know, a deal, you know, $5 for like eight books.
Yeah.
And so, oh, I don't know. Well, whatever. It's not really our problem.
Have you heard what other friends of the library are doing? Are they doing anything elsewhere?
Yeah, they're all doing fundraisers, virtual fundraisers, so, yeah. I send them ideas every now and then, but I belong to the National Friends of the Library Group. So I see all the discussions and I've asked them to please join, um, but, uh, they haven't. So I try to send relevant things that wouldn't be a lot of manpower or a lot of work. But nothing happened. Actually, Carol Wells, the, um, the fundraiser you're doing with the bulbs is something that I found, uh, several years ago and sent to the Friends and they didn't want to do it.
Uh, we don't even know how that's going to work out for us, to tell the truth. You know, it's hard to advertise, like you say, and, but we're trying.
And it makes more sense coming from your group, but.
Right.
I was just desperate for, it's, because it's easy. It's an easy fundraiser.
Right, right.
If you get enough people.
Right, yeah. By the way, we have over 200 more cranes that are coming to you from the church.
Oh, great.
Yeah, well, they're, they're stringing them together, I think, and we're using them in the service this Sunday, but I think they're coming over to you after that.
Okay.
Okay, just want to let you know.
I'll pass that along.
Okay.
The woman that made 1,000 cranes, she has it on a hanging kind of thing and it's just full of these cranes. It's so pretty. Might want to borrow it for your church service.
Well, that's an idea.
Anything else I can fill you in on?
Don't think so. I don't have anything else. Anyone have questions, new business or? Well, I guess we would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Um, I'll, I'll, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
And I'll second. Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Donna.
Hopefully we can get, um, outreach going and keep some of you busy. And, uh, my finance committee will meet again closer to budget time.
Okay. I, I just wanted to let you know on the 14th, I will be away and I do not know whether or not I will have, uh, access to, you know, computers. So I will try my best.
Are you talking next month?
Next month, yes, yeah. Yeah, we, we will be out of state.
Okay.
Camping and sometimes we have Wi-Fi and sometimes we don't. It just depends.
You can borrow.
I should borrow a hot pot. I should get a hot pot.
As long as you have your phone, you can call in too.
Right, yeah, I, I guess, yeah. It's not as good.
Hey, how about a plug for your bulb program? What is, uh, what are you doing for bulbs?
I, you know something, I don't know. We haven't had a meeting as yet, so I have no idea. I imagine they're doing tulips and daffodils and, you know, spring type of stuff. That's what I would think.
It is.
But, but I, I, you know, I don't know. I think Wednesday, tomorrow, we, we will maybe find out more.
Okay.
Okay.
Elaine, your face just popped up. It's a miracle.
Lilian, where?
Last minute of the meeting, we got to see you.
I know. I saw all of you, so that's a more important thing.
Put it in a virtual backdrop. You can change your drop.
It looks like you're sitting on the beach and it looks like your hair is blowing.
It's an illusion.
That's annoying.
Up with the, uh, with the formulating the messaging for outreach, just let me know.
I will do that. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Okay, good night.
Good night.
Stay safe.
Night.
Stay safe and healthy.
Yes.